Let me say good evening to all of us on tonight and welcome to the agenda for the Muskogee Municipal Authority for August 9, 2021. We will start with the invocation followed by the flag salute. Let us stand. Let us pray. Eternal God, we give you thanks for this day. Lord, we could not make the decisions we make without the power and direction of your Holy Spirit. I pray, oh God, that each of us respectively, as well as a community, Father, will adhere to your presence. Lord, that you will lead and guide us in the way that is pleasing to your sight, that gives glory to your name and grows our city. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Let us turn to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of July 12, 2021, or take other necessary action.
Do we have corrections that need to be made to the minutes or a motion to approve is presented?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending July 31, 2021, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, you have before you the claims for the Muskogee Municipal Authority. We do recommend approval and are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have any questions of the council on the claims on tonight?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive the claims. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Same.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. That will conclude the Muskogee Municipal Authority meeting for August 9, 2021. We will now move to the agenda for the Muskogee City Council for August 9, 2021. Before we go into that meeting on tonight, we have a proclamation that we would like to present to the National Guard and Reserve for National Guard and Reserve Week. The proclamation says, whereas the brave men and women who serve in the National Guard and Reserve answer our nation's call without hesitation, leaving their families and civilian employment to support our communities at home or protect our nation's interests overseas. Whereas employers of the National Guard and Reserve service members play a critical role in the success of our national defense strategy and the readiness for our armed forces. And whereas employers who have, who value the military service of the National Guard and Reserve employees help sustain the all-volunteer force. And whereas the volunteers of the Oklahoma Committee for Employer Support of the National Guard and Reserve works tirelessly to foster positive relationships between National Guard service members and their employers through education and outreach that increases awareness of the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act. Whereas we honor and recognize supportive employers of the Muskogee, in Muskogee, for their patriotism and commitment to their National Guard and Reserve employees. Now therefore, I, Mayor Marlon J. Coleman, hereby proclaim for August 15 through 21, 2021, for the city of Muskogee, Oklahoma, as employer support of National Guard and Reserve Week. And we have a representative. I'll ask that you come forward and join us at the podium at this time. Let us celebrate this event.
May I consider Muskogee, thank you again for everything that is done. Appreciate all of the hard work that goes into making sure that all of our nation's security and the communities are protected. So we have to say to Muskogee, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. On behalf of the Department of Defense and the National Guard and Reserve members and the employers, I thank you as well and the city of Muskogee for this great opportunity. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take some nicer photos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
We will now consider approval of the minutes for the special call city council, July 19, 2021, and city council regular session, July 26, 2021. I hope that we've all had an opportunity to read those minutes. Do we have a motion to approve or any discussion?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a discussion on those minutes as read. Do we have any further discussion from the council? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider the consent agenda, which is items one and two. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda or do either of those items need to be moved to the regular agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number three.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of ordinance 4124A to rezone 941 North Main Street, City of Muskogee, from C1 Local Commercial to C2 General Commercial. And if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. This item came before you last week on August 2 for Public Works and has also been approved through the Planning Commission. We have a short presentation to discuss this. This is the rezoning of property located at 941 North Main. Mr. Patrick Hale is here. Should you have any additional questions about it? Basically, it is to increase the option for lease and sell of the building by rezoning from C1 to C2. This is the map showing the location of the site. Another map showing the zoning for the area. And the site here is at C1 Local Commercial. And then also, this is a view, another view from the Third Street side. And here are the other zonings for the area. We're requesting the approval of this item. Once again, it's already been through the Public Works Commission as well as the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We don't have anyone signed up to speak to this item. We will now close the public hearing. Do we have any comments or discussion from the council on this item?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Any further discussion from the council? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number four.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of ordinance 4125A to rezone lots 8 and 24, Block 2 Reeves Edition, located at 415 West Shawnee, City of Muskogee, from R1 Single Family to C1 Local Commercial. And if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Mr. Davis.
Thank you. On this item right here, we have, basically, it's concerning the cleaning up of the title. If you see on the map, there are some lots that are zoned residential that will be rezoned to commercial. That's basically it for that. Just cleaning up the title. There's some lots there in the parking lot. One's on the east, in the east parking lot, another one's on the west, the southwest parking lot. And this item will clear the title and bring everything into the same zoning.
Move for approval.
Second. We will now close the public hearing. We will now take any discussion from the council if there be any at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
We now have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussions from the council? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Evelyn Hibbs. Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number five.
Receive report on status of COVID-19 in Muskogee and take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. There's been a lot of discussion and people are very aware of what's happening in our community with the resurgence of COVID-19. Last week, council members asked me to put a status report for the community on the agenda for tonight. I'm going to ask Tyler Evans, our emergency manager, to come forward and help us with that. We're talking about updating our workplace protocols. As you know, Sid, he is an employer and want to keep our employees healthy in the workplace, as well as information about the spread and the effects of COVID in our community. Mr. Evans will start us off and there may be others to, he'll bring forward to discuss as well.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In front of you should have a packet that looks similar to this. This is some quick facts we have that's concerning the state of Oklahoma, our current status, and the city of Muskogee and Muskogee County. But also have some representatives from St. Francis, Muskogee here, along with the Muskogee County Health Department that I'd like to speak on the topic as well. The state of Oklahoma is reporting active cases at the city and county level once a week on Wednesdays. We used to get that information almost on a daily basis. When COVID kind of slowed down a little bit earlier this year, they went to reporting once a week and that's currently where we're at right now. As of last week, on the 4th, the city of Muskogee had 267 active cases and 135 deaths. From a month ago, this is a 1,235% increase. If you look at the chart there, it's attached. That's about a month snapshot. You can tell from July 14 to July 21, we more than doubled our numbers and we did the same thing the following week. As of August 2, Muskogee County is in the orange category for the risk level. If you guys remember seeing the Oklahoma map, that used to be orange and dark orange, so on and so forth. As you remember, the threshold for crossing over into orange was 14.29 cases per 100,000. We are currently at 60.9 cases per 100,000. On July 6, about a month ago, we were at four cases. So quite a bit of an increase from four up to 60. According to the State of Oklahoma Weekly Epidemiology Report that was published last Wednesday, the number of COVID cases in the state have increased over 40% from the previous week. Some of the vaccine data that's available to us in Muskogee County, over 41% of citizens over the age of 12 have been fully vaccinated. 53.5% have received at least one dose. The 65 and up age group is over 74% fully vaccinated and at least, almost 88% of them have received at least one dose out of that. We have the Muskogee County Health Department that can touch on that and talk about our vaccine status and our progress. According to the latest report, as of August 1, in the previous 30 days, 632 hospitalizations have occurred due to COVID-19. Out of those hospitalizations, 479 were unvaccinated, or roughly 75%. For the age group of 18 through 35, there are 74 hospitalizations. Out of those, 70 of those were unvaccinated, or 94.5%. For the age group 36 to 49, 90 hospitalizations occurred with 83 of those, or 92.2% being unvaccinated individuals. The data is showing that the overwhelming majority of people that are in the hospital due to COVID are unvaccinated. Attached to this packet on the following pages are some different graphs that come from our epidemiology report, that come from the Mayo Clinic, that come from our state health department. On that first page on the back, you can see our city of Muskogee active cases that we talked about. It is increasing quite sharply, rapidly. There's our risk alert map that we talked about. The 14.9 cases per 100,000 will put you in the orange. You can see Muskogee County on there. And on the following pages are some data from, like I said, the CDC's website, the Mayo Clinic's website, all showing a sharp increase in the number of active cases for our community. Attached to this is also the vaccine data that comes from the state to correlate with the data that presented to you earlier. But without much further ado, I would like to introduce some representatives from St. Francis, Muskogee that's here to speak on the status of our healthcare system here in Muskogee.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Matt Adams. I'm the Executive Director of Operations for St. Francis Hospital in Muskogee. And I just wanted to give you guys just a real brief update around what we're seeing across the health system as it pertains to COVID-19. So as of this morning, the health system had 208 COVID-positive inpatients. 34 of those are in our hospital here in Muskogee. At the peak in January, the health system observed 309 inpatients. So we're about 2/3 of the way there across the health system. And then our peak in the hospital here, back in January, was 61. So about halfway there to what we saw last January. When you look at July, we started July 1 with two positive COVID inpatients, ended the month with 22. So you can just see that even over the last week or so, we've gone from 22 to 34. So we're continuing to see those numbers increase pretty steadily every day. We also track our positivity rate when it comes to the testing that we do. Fortunately, we were able to test because of the size of the health system, a lot of folks across eastern Oklahoma. We're currently at a 36% positive rate for people that we test for COVID. The previous high was 32% and that was back in early January of this year. The system's seven-day daily average for tests, the week ending August 6, so last Friday, was 748. The prior week was 613. So week over week, about a 22% increase in people coming to get tests within the St. Francis health system. The system's 30-day daily average for tests, so July 6 through August 6, and once again, ending last Friday, was 526. The previous 30 days was 219 tests. So month over month, about 140% increase there. So we're seeing it on the inpatient side. We're seeing the positive tests on the outpatient side. And so we just kind of anticipate that as we continue to see these high positivity rates, unfortunately, more people are going to be driven to the hospitals over the coming weeks. Internally, our policy is still for all staff to be masked when they're inside the hospital. All of our staff does wear protective eyewear whenever they're doing any kind of patient care. So talking about taking care of your staff, we're doing the best that we can to keep our folks in the hospital so that we can take care of folks that need care, that do enter our hospital. We continue to watch our distance, much like I'm sure you guys are doing. We continue to wash our hands. I mean, that's just a daily grind for us, stuff we're continuing to do. And we just encourage, once again, everybody to continue to follow CDC guidance when it comes to how you protect yourself and how you protect others. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Delby Walker with Muskogee County Health Department.
Good afternoon. I'm just here today to talk a little bit about how we are willing to help you with your employees. We do have our wellness vans, as you guys are aware of. We talked to you about that a few weeks ago. We're willing to come out to your sites and test as well as vaccinate, whichever one is needed. What we do have on the books right now are for the next three Fridays, we'll come out to the different sites that Tyler tells us to go to and vaccinate. And so, you know, we're always happy to partner with you guys and offer any kind of assistance that we can.
Are there any specific questions? While we have St. Francis here, we have the Health Department here. We also have a representative from EMS here. Does anybody have any questions?
One of the questions I have, Mr. Evans, in terms of the residents concerned for testing, how often should a person be tested? So in other words, if there was something that provoked a person to be tested on yesterday, is there a waiting period before they should have to wait to be tested again?
I'm going to refer to our Health Department for...
So the question is, if a person, for example, is tested today, all right, because there was a scare or they couldn't...
Exposed.
Exposed, is there a waiting period before, they should wait before they get tested again?
Sure. So let's say you were exposed. We recommend exactly what, in line with, I'm sure the hospitals, well, CDC recommends that if you're vaccinated and you were exposed, within three to five days afterwards, then you test, okay? And with the Health Department, it takes a couple of days. I'm not sure about the hospital. It takes a couple of days for us to get our PCP, PCR results back. So you wouldn't want to test before you get those results back. You only want to test if you're exposed, right? That's vaccinated. Unvaccinated, it's the same thing. As far as you get exposed, it's a five to seven-day window that you are going to test in. You don't want to go test day five, day six, day seven. You want to wait until you get your results back, then test. If you're exposed, you test vaccinated, you all vaccinated. You test today, okay, between the day three and day five window. It's negative, but then you're exposed again, you're going to go through the same process. You're going to go through that same process of testing three to five days after you were exposed.
The reason I ask that is because for the many employees who on a day-to-day basis, in different capacities, who may be interacting with the public more often than others, you know, how often should they be tested? Some people would think every day if they don't know any better.
No. For instance, us, we're out in the community on a regular basis. We do wear our mask. We do wear our mask and we social distance as much as we can. If we're out doing an event, Martha King Center, we have people coming in on a regular basis. We're wearing our mask. If you're not having symptoms and you're vaccinated, then, and you're not exposed, you don't have to test. But if you find out aunt, uncle, somebody or employee walks up to you, they're positive and you want to test, then you test. You don't have to test every day.
So how does that factor into those people who may be asymptomatic?
I mean, well, the numbers are showing, what CDC is putting out, is that they still very much can spread it. I mean, it's a low rate, but there's still that factor that the chance that they can spread it. So they still would want to test.
Right. Because the general question I have is still, you know, the timeframe. So wait till you're exposed, or don't wait till you're exposed?
If you're not, if you're vaccinated and you're exposed, you don't have to quarantine. You continue as normal. But we, CDC does recommend testing because there are some that are asymptomatic. And that window to test is three to five days after you were exposed.
And the second question I have is when I look at the graphs that are presented, it appears that in western Oklahoma, the numbers are not climbing as fast. And I wonder if there's anything to substantiate why that is. So on this graphic and the two graphics after that, everything to the east of the Panhandle seems to be moving up. But those things that are right in the Panhandle seems to be moving up slower. Is there anything to substantiate why that is?
Well, so like northeast Oklahoma, we're hot, right? But you think about, close to us are the states that are hotter.
Okay.
And people have been vacationing in those states. And you think about where the hotspot is, the beginning started, was Branson.
Okay.
So people vacationed and went up right up that, right up our area, came back home from going to Branson.
Okay. So these areas, these areas, the reason why they're not as hot is attributed to the fact that less travel in that area?
Yes, sir.
And the actual rate of the spread, I guess, across the country from east to west?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And, you know, the states right by us are states that are on CDC's list as highest cases, less vaccination. That's why, I was talking to Tyler earlier and was sharing with him, the campaign that the city did actually worked. You think about it, we were at 27.1% vaccinated when we started that campaign. Three months later, we ended it, we were at 51.5%. During that three-month period, the emphasis on giving opportunities for people to get vaccinated, it was successful. So Muskogee, the county of Muskogee is doing well at this point. We are still increasing the opportunities out in the community. You'll see our vans everywhere. We're increasing the opportunities for people to get vaccinated because we know that that's another level of protection.
And I'm assuming that when we come to this meeting by next week, we should be social distancing. Because it's tight up here without COVID.
Right.
I don't know, Mr. Miller's gaining some weight or...
Mr. Miller looks great.
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of snug up here. So, but, but all jokes aside, I'm assuming that for all of our safety precautions, we should probably be social distancing better than we are.
So CDC, you know, continues to say, as many preventative measures as you can, the masking, the social distance, three feet, six feet, you know, the social distance and washing your hands frequently, as St. Francis stated. As many preventative measures as you can put in place to protect yourself and others is very important.
Do we have any other questions for the guests on tonight?
I'm just curious, what is the ICU beds at the St. Francis as of today?
We're at capacity in the ICU.
Are we sending people out? Are looking for beds? Are we there?
Why don't we have them come in the microphone? Because I think for the public, they need to have heard especially what was just said about the capacity.
Thank you. My name is Kim Walton. I'm Director of Acute Care. So I'm over the ICU in the Emergency Department and the Respiratory Department at St. Francis here in Muskogee. Our ICU has been at capacity for a little over a week now. We transfer out if there's a bed available. And there are times when we can't transfer out because there are no beds available in Tulsa either. So in that situation, we have to hold them in the Emergency Department and get creative with trying to move other patients out of the ICU to make space. And it's been a challenge.
And what is the bed capacity for ICU?
Our, our current bed capacity is 16.
It's how many?
16.
Ma'am, while you're up, you might want to explain that, if I'm not incorrect, in calculating those bed capacities, you also have to factor in staff.
That's exactly right. The impact of COVID on our staffing has also been a challenge. And that's been throughout the past year, not just immediately. But certainly, staff have retired sooner than anticipated because of COVID. We do have staff who are out with COVID at times, which means we have to shuffle around to make accommodations, to get beds staffed that are normally staffed easily. And then the impact of competition from surrounding areas, the hotspots that Delby talked about, are pulling staff from us with incentives and travel contracts. So that's a factor.
Is that staffing unique to St. Francis, the staffing issues that you all are facing?
No, it's nationwide.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, I would recognize.
Yes, Mr. Van.
Step to her, ma'am.
Ma'am.
Sorry, trying to escape.
You know, last July, last July, I remember this as well as yesterday.
Yeah.
And y'all came up here from St. Francis. And I remember one question I asked you, I had my mask on that night. I said, is anybody at the hospital, your employees wearing masks? Y'all's answer to me was no. Well, so it had to progress and progress and progress before you went there. But you went there, just like right now. Last week, Mr. Robinson, ex-Senator Robinson, he came up here. He gave a report on the ambulance of how we had to go to other places because there wasn't no room in the end. That means there wasn't no room at the hospital. I called Ms. Keating last week before Mr. Robinson done his presentation to have somebody from that hospital come up here and give a report. You think I heard from her? Didn't hear one single word, not one single phone call. But last Tuesday, when I left Public Works meeting, I was on my way to get some ice cream. I had to go by the hospital. And this is the first time for me. I looked over there, I seen all these people around ICU, outside, sitting in their lawn chairs, families. You know, I've seen it on TV, but I've never seen it in person. But you know this one thing. I remember this one gentleman on Facebook. I was sitting up here by myself with his mask on. Hey, boy, don't he look stupid up there with that mask on? Yeah, I guess I did, because I'm trying to protect myself and other folks. But tonight, when I come up here, I'm not the only councilman with a mask on. As you look around, not in the audience either. You got, people got masks on. So it's real. It's back. You know this one thing about America? They like to play. And sometimes we can play and play and play. But you know what? God has the last say so to get our attention. Sometimes you got to lay down and look up to think. Just like my saying, I always will say this. Until it comes home to you, your home, this COVID, that's what gets your attention. But this time, I'm not going to harp and rave like I did last time, brought a casket up here and trying to prove something. Because everybody, like I say, everybody's grown and everybody said he got their rights. You do. You got the right to die. And this stuff will take you out of here. But I'm glad the hospital came up here tonight. I'm glad we finally got some reports. Because I know it's real. All we have to do is watch CNN, we can watch the Fox channels, whether we're Democrat or Republican, it don't matter. COVID is real. So thank you for everyone that came up here tonight, the Health Department, everybody, and let us know.
You're welcome.
It's real.
Yes.
It is definitely.
It's very much real.
It's very, very much real. Another thing gets me is, I'm going to say this, and I'm going to be quiet. You can go out to these eating places. going to be quiet. You can go out to these eating places, oh, they jam packed. I mean, no mask, no mask. We're just sitting up there eating, they're sitting up there eating like it ain't nothing, like it's, you know. And one, one more thing, we have a problem here in Muskogee, if y'all don't realize. You know, school's getting ready to start. We got three schools that's closed down. In order, others, that means other students have to go to other schools to get these classrooms full. Forty-some students, or thirty-nine students, a lot of people in a classroom. I had a gentleman call me the other day, saying that's what they're doing at these schools. You know, that's, that's bad. Our schools need masks. This is my opinion. This is Ivory Van's opinion. I ain't blaming on another council mayor, whatever. This is my opinion. When you open school, these students need to have masks on. There don't need to be that many students in a classroom, forty students. But you know what? We got a governor that runs the state, that don't run the state. He should step in and say, everybody need to put a mask on. Just like tonight, everybody in here should have a mask on. Even though we got vaccinated, we should have masks on. But that, you know, in case y'all didn't know that about the school system, you need to get with the, the, the people at the school, the teachers. I was in Charlie's Eating today, and I was asking some questions from teachers who were sitting down eating while I went to grab my food to get out of there. But I'm just saying, this stuff is real. And we need to make sure that we're protecting our children when they go to school. Get with some of those school board members. Call them and ask them why they're going to let these students go to school before they're in a class. Ask them questions to them. Because I'm going to that school board next meeting they have. So I'm going to be quiet, but like I say, I can look foolish as I can up here with this mask, but that's all right with me. I don't care what nobody say. I'm protecting myself and you. Thank you, ma'am. I turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Mr. Miller?
Please, Dr. Who said?
I have a question real quick.
Yes, sir.
So I know when we were in the peak of it last year, we had a pretty significant issue with having, our ambulance service was covering for a lot of other counties and, and taking, and, and I'm glad you're here today. Are we running into that same problem now where we have, and I know with Mr. Robinson talking last week, we also had units that were, that were down.
Yes, sir, we're still covering outside our county and going outside the state significantly. Arkansas, Missouri, Little Rock, meet Arkansas, Springfield, that's our main ones that we're transporting to right now. We are covering outside of our county, that contiguous counties around us right now.
How's that impacting our coverage locally?
Well, it's, it's straining it. We're, we're going to start pulling back from that. But I was back there looking at, right now, we have one ambulance in the county. It's, it's, it's just, it's hitting us in waves. And so it's, it's terrible. We're, we're fully staffed. It's just, it's just the amount of trucks that we have available and the number of calls coming in at one time.
So I know last week, Mr. Robinson was here, and he said that we had several units that just weren't working anymore. Is that one of the issues while we have one ambulance in the county right now?
Yes.
Or in the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And let me remind the council, this may be a different subject for another day, and it probably is. We have received guidance from Congress that suggests we can use rescue funds to assist in the purchase of ambulances. So that's something that we will be considering in the near future. Mr. Miller?
I'll turn it over, make sure Mr. Evans is, is done. I don't know if he has anything else he wants to add.
If there's no further questions, I'd like to thank, say, our partners. We continue to work with EMS, with the Muskogee County Health Department and our St. Francis on a daily, weekly basis throughout this pandemic. And I want to thank our guests for coming here tonight. And they don't have to be here, and they chose voluntarily to be here to present this data with us. So I'd like to thank them for taking time out of their day to be here and continue working through, working with us throughout this pandemic. And that's all I have.
Will it be next week? Will it be, do we still have facts and figures about what's going on with this pandemic?
It depends if there's an agenda item made for it.
We, I think we definitely need to make an agenda item. Mr. Mayor, I know you the mayor and whatever in the council, but this thing is serious. We don't, like I say, we don't need to be sitting in here like we are now without no mask. And, and sitting close to us like this. Because we need to go back to reality and, and do like we started, you know, finally, after we finally got caught on to this thing, to bring things back, put the perception back, COVID is here. You know, we need to change. Some on this next agenda needs to have COVID on it, without all of us sitting up in here, all these chairs back here, and people should be having masks on. That's just my, that's just my perspective. I'm not going to put it on there. I'm not, like I said, I'm not going to fight it. It's going to take some other councilman up here to work this time, you know. But that, that definitely needs to be done. That's just a suggestion from me.
Yes, sir.
Turn the floor back over to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, Mr. Reed?
Yes, I just wanted to, you know, once again, for a solution for the community, just want to remind everyone that every Thursday, you know, it was our expectation, we've been going, I believe, going on twenty-three weeks now, in providing the vaccines at the Martin Luther King Center. And we was going to give it a rest at the end of July. But we are committed to go as long as we have to. And so with that being said, every Thursday, any one twelve-year-old and older are welcome to come to the Muskogee Martin Luther King Center. You can go on the porter and reserve your time, or walk-ins are welcome. This is a serious situation, and I just want to thank the Muskogee County Health Department for partnering with us to provide us with those vaccines. And so we're there every Thursday from nine to six at the Muskogee Martin Luther King Center.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Miller, council. Any other questions before we move on?
So I, I did want to add to the discussion about vaccines. The city staff is preparing a proposal to incentivize vaccines among our employees for our workplace safety. So I want to bring, put that just out there as something for you guys to know about and to consider, that we'll bring forward at a future time. Because we do know vaccines from the data that was shown today are highly effective in preventing the very serious illnesses. And we want to do that for our employees and to encourage that, to have a high rate of vaccination among our employees. So we will be bringing that forward in, at a coming meeting as well.
Also, that night, I, I was telling you about, I went to the hospital and seen all these people. When I walked up on the lady, and I asked her what was going on, you know what she told me? My relatives just passed away. I, I just felt all that air come out of me. It's real. People is real. Turn the floor back over to Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm through.
Thank you. Item number six.
Consider approval of final payment to APEC Central Incorporated for the winter storm emergency road repairs in the amount of forty-eight thousand, seven hundred, thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, Mayor and council, this item is to do final payment to APEC Central for closing out this project. Do have a PowerPoint that we put together just to go over the emergency road repairs. So this was actually declared an emergency on February twenty-second of 2021. The project cost for it was nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and a dime. The work actually started on March eighth of 2021. Punch List was developed and a finish date was seven twenty of 2021. I know you've seen this map previously, but this is just a map that's showing some separate quadrants in the community and the roads that were actually repaired. We did add in your packet, a list of all these streets. And I'd go through them individually, but I'm going to do it like this. So we did repair Collier from Jefferson to Utah Street. We did Smith Ferry Road from Cherokee to Gooik. We did a small patch on Gibson from Utah to Walnut. We did Jefferson from York to Utah. We did East Forty-first Street from Hancock to the Tribal Health Center. We did Country Club from Hancock to the school, and that's just south of the school, and it goes all the way to Hancock. And we also did Shawnee from Highway sixty-nine to, to Fortieth Street. And we did Fortieth from Broadway to Buffalo Drive. Chestnut from Anatol to, to the end of it. And a spot on Robinson from Kentucky to Utah. Fortieth from Columbus to Denver, that was just a one block. And Military from Twenty-Fourth to Sixty-Nine. We did develop that punch list. We have, it satisfied our needs and the punch list was completed, and we do recommend final payment to APEC.
Let me say, before we take any further discussion from the council, our motion to approve the final payment, that certainly we are grateful to the staff for having come up with that plan, to have done that, and thankful for the council for having approved it. And I also want to remind the, the council that when it comes to our street repairs in emergency areas, that as long as the resources are available, and we have the will to do it, that those repairs can be accomplished. What I'd like to see us consider outside of this agenda going forward is that we consider the same type of aggressive approach to some of our neighborhoods, using some reserve funds where we can, to be certain that those neighborhoods are not just managed when there's an emergency, but also when the need is a, is, is there to have, taking place. Do we have any other comments from the council?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number six. Any further discussion?
I just want to say APEC did an excellent job on those roads. I've been down a couple of them.
Thank you.
Any others? Roll call?
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number eight.
Consider approval of contract amendment number seven between the City of Muskogee and Garver LLC dated August thirteenth, 2010, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, I want to ask Mr. Reeves to give me an assist with this. He's been working on this project with me.
Yes, we have previously used Pinnacle Consulting Management Group for right-of-way services, approvals, services, acquisition, negotiation services, title services, survey and staking, and condemnation support. We have used them on Twenty-Fourth Street and York Street. Future projects that we'll be using them on would be the landfill, which is a sewer line that will tie in from a retention pond into our sewer line, Country Club, North and South, Smith Ferry, Road Improvements and Waterline. The standard fee schedule is included on page six of your packet. If there's any other questions?
Council, do we have any questions regarding item number seven?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number seven. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number eight.
Consider approval of contract amendment number seven between the City of Muskogee and Garver LLC dated August thirteenth, 2010, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, Mayor and council, as you know, we do have an executive session to discuss Twenty-Fourth Street, so I'm not going to go into great detail over the street project. But I will tell you that the contract with Garver terminated when we moved into liquidated damages portion of this project. We are going to continue to need engineering services as this project moves, moves forward. And what we were able to do was negotiate with Garver for an hourly rate, and that fee schedule is in your packet. So when we do need Garver to put together some type of engineering for a resolution, for example, we ran into a sewer line that we didn't know existed, and we have to, to go around it, then some engineering work needs to be done to help us get that accomplished. So we do recommend approval. This is a not-to-exceed amount of sixteen thousand dollars. And this, by the way, will be paid for through liquidated damages. That's how that works. So we do recommend the approval of it. This is to hire Garver on an hourly basis to continue to give us the support we need on Twenty-Fourth Street. We do recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Do we have any questions of Mr. Stewart regarding item number eight?
Move for approval?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We don't have any citizens having signed up to speak to us tonight. We will move to item number nine.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307(c)(11), Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development within the southwest quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. B pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss a pending claim or action related to the Twenty-Fourth Street Improvement Project, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. C pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Doug Lane, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. D pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of John Tipton, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session.
We will now consider a motion to go into executive session.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Roll call?
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We're going to ask that those of you who are not on any of these items, please excuse yourself from council chamber at this time. Executive session, roll call?
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 9A pursuant to Section 307(c)(11), Title 25 Oklahoma statutes. The city council did convene an executive session for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development within the southwest quadrant of the city. After being briefed on the status of a potential development opportunity within that area, at this point, no action is necessary. Item 9B pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, the council did convene an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Doug Lane. After being briefed on the status of that ongoing claim and a potential settlement, I believe an appropriate motion would be to authorize the city attorney to negotiate a settlement of the claim with Mr. Lane within the range discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded on item number C. Roll call?
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Item D pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, the council convened an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of John Tipton. After being briefed of the status of that claim and a potential settlement, I believe an appropriate motion would be to authorize the city attorney to negotiate a settlement of the workers' compensation claim of John Tipton within the range discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded on item D. Roll call?
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We have no other items to consider tonight. We are adjourned.